Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and start. Valerie, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everyone. We just rushed over from Executive. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get underway. With that, can we have a verification of quorum?
Yes. Director Alex Cook.
Here.
Director Van Lee.
Here.
Director Doherty.
Here.
Director Tim Cook.
Here.
President Griffiths.
Here.
I present for a minute.
All right, and can we, is there approval or a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Five in favor, motion carried.
Public comments? Any public officials looking? I don't see anyone here. Okay. We're gonna move on to, we have a presentation for you today. Nikita. And while they're pulling it up, hopefully everyone either saw online or picked up this amazing piece about the modernization of, or modernizing Canyon Lake. That's what we're gonna go through for your presentation today. I think it's, we made this announcement when we had our ribbon cutting ceremony at Vacation Park. Just like it takes to, you know, they say it takes a village to raise a child, it takes a village of volunteers, whether it's through committees or board members to make these projects come to fruition, and it takes years. And go ahead and... If we wanna go ahead and, well, whoop. That's okay. While she's doing that, I will tell you, I had the best time flying in the helicopter and dropping balls on the golf course. Oh my gosh, if you get a chance to fly over Canyon Lake in a helicopter, it's the most amazing thing to do. And you wanna have the door off, because it's even better. All right, so with that, we're gonna start with this year, this fiscal year, so special thanks to this entire board that's up here for funding the Canyon Lake Drive median improvements, funding the lodge interior and exterior renovation projects, and then funding the pickleball courts. So we're excited that those are the two things that we gotta check off our list that we were able to fund this year. And as we go through, you'll see all the different steps and everyone who was involved in each, in each phase. So 2021, President Joe Comagian under his board, funding for Vacation Park, which was approved by all the member, well, approved by the members, not all the members, but approved by the members. We had funding for the Year One paving project, pickleball Phase Two for the design, funding of the Happy Camp restroom remodel, which I'm excited made it ADA compliant. Multiple Canyon Lake Drive South median designs were done, which we used this year. And then the solar power, ah, power purchase agreement was signed. I had to rush home to feed my dog, so I'm calming down now. All right, so our 2021 board, this was President Chris Pollan, and we had Directors Tom Nathan, Jim Beringham, Jeannie Odell, and Joe Comagian, design contract with the landscape architect and the facility planning committee to review the Canyon Lake Drive median improvements, funding for the golf course irrigation project, which that has saved us over a hundred, the number came in, it was over a hundred thousand dollars just in the water bill, not including the rebate from Metropolitan, so well done on that, to that board. Funding for the lodge dark part, lodge, large dog park, funding for Roadrunner Park restroom and ADA access ramp. And if no one had ever been there, it's been an outhouse, it's been an outhouse. So well done on that, it's nice to go on the lake and not see an outhouse. Design services for the lodge exterior patio and design services for Roadrunner Park restroom, design services for Year One road paving. So a lot of work involved in that board, and thank you for that. Next. So the 2019, 2020, so President Dell Welty and Directors Tom Nathan, Jim Beringham, Jeannie Odell, and Chris Pollan, funding for the parking lot pavement project, lodge access, and the ADA ramps walkway, which is incredibly important on the ADA, funding for the golf course lake and hole number thirteen refurbishment, funding for the pole deck remodel and new pole building, which is beautiful, funding for the new Happy Camp playground, and though I've never gone to the campground to stay there, it's fantastic, and the playground's beautiful. Design services for Sierra Park North Development and the pump track. Worked on the lodge patio interior exteriors, they worked on the solar project as well. And with that, it was vetted with FPC and the Finance Committee to get their input. And Facility Planning Committee had discussions back, back then on the median design. And we're getting close to the end. Our 2018, 2019 board, I'd like to thank President Mike Harris. And then our Directors Jim Beringham, Dell Welty, Tom Nathan, and Phil Hoggard. There we had funding of Happy Camp dock, funding of the small dog park, Eastport block wall, East Gate entrance signage, North ski area access and picnic area, which I believe the ski club also contributed funds to, so we appreciate that from that club. And then lodge exterior patio designs discussion, so that started back in 2018, 2019. And I think our last year is this one, 2017, 2018. President Paul Queen, Directors Dell Welty, Tom Nathan, Phil Hoggard, and Mike Harris. So we had funding for the main gate entrance and monuments, Happy Camp renovation, mailbox replacement project, which is, I believe, still ongoing, because there are some unique areas. Funding for Holiday Harbor Amphitheater Lodge Interior Renovations discussions began back in 2017, 2018 board. Also, the median design began, discussions and execution of our first country club remodel. And the 2017 Facility Planning Committee Long Range Master Plan includes a lodge, fire pits, wedding gazebas, and solar powered projects. So I'd like to thank the FPC Committee, all of those involved throughout. That started this five-year plan that we've been executing over the last five years. So we do have a common thread in all of this, one that we'll highlight, although Steve's very much involved too, so I don't wanna forget you, Steve. But it's our amazing General Manager Eric Kazakoff, his incredible staff that just supports him. And you guys are also amazing. And then if you didn't know, if you didn't see the announcement, we are pleased to say that Eric won two Vision Awards this year. And one is for his leadership, which staff can attest to. And the other one is, it was innovation. And I think we can see, we can certainly see here on the modernizing, the innovation that he has brought to Canyon Lake. And then for me personally, all the money that you have saved by managing multiple projects. And we didn't have to hire anyone for that, and thanks to you, Steve, for that. So thank you very much. So with that, I'm gonna go on to an announcement. The board has agreed to enter into new contracts with our General Manager Eric Kazakoff and our golf professional Pat Kimball. And it will be finalized at the end of this month. So I'm excited about that for both golf, yep, for golf, and for Eric and his staff. And then last update and announcement, I just wanna let everyone know that regarding the sale of the fire station, that the parties are in process of negotiating the language of the prospective sale of the fire station. So in case if anyone has any concerns, we're still in that process. With that, we're gonna go ahead and move on to member comments. Do you have any member comments?
Yes, our first is Bradley Morton.
Yep, and then just hit the red button.
All right, well, thanks for allowing me this opportunity. I wanted to take a chance to thank the board for their consideration of the Clear Foundation's recent application to become a club. And we were really excited with our first year, just getting started last year, where forty-one Canyon Lake kids were able to complete the Junior Lifeguard Program at Lake Paris. We really appreciated the joint effort that the city provided transportation so that the kids from here in Canyon Lake could be bused to the lifeguard training facilities there at the Lake Paris. We're going to be doing that again this year. And going to be, hopefully, the goal there is to not only provide good recreational activity for the kids during the summer and provide some relief from the parents in terms of daycare and childcare, youth care in that case, but also to provide the youth of Canyon Lake with a higher level of water safety. Obviously, we're a water-centric community, and we feel that each child that becomes more capable of helping themselves and helping others can only benefit our community as a whole. You never know who's around when somebody needs help, et cetera. And then this year, in addition to that, continuation of that, we're really excited to be collaborating, and we've already had some meetings jointly with the water ski club and the wakeboarding club to put on a wakeboarding and waterskiing summer camp, again, providing an alternative for the kids to get off the couch and not play their video games as much, and hopefully get out and enjoy the tremendous amount of recreation that we have here in the lake. And also to continue to feed the memberships of both of those clubs. Waterskiing is one of those sports where unless you're introduced to it and start getting basically coached up, it gets more enjoyable as you learn the skill. The first time you get up on skis, it's, it's fun, but the tenth time you get up on skis, it's really fun. So that's the goal, and I think that pretty much concludes it. Just wanted to speak on behalf of Vice President Jeremy Smith and our treasurer, Casey Castillo, and we really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Brad.
Canyon Lake enrichment activities and recreation.
Thank you, Brad.
Next is Travis Montgomery.
Lot thirty-eight sixty-three, lot zero one zero. I wanted to comment tonight on Outrigger Park or Evans Park East, as you may choose to call it. But the presentation that was just given to us falls right in line with that. It's about three years ago, I talked to the General Manager about that area. It's across the street from my house, and it's been unimproved for, what are we, in our fifty-something year? But in the twenty-some years we've been living there, it's been unimproved. And I, at that time, suggested something like maybe a community garden there. Well, I was pleased to see last month that a community garden is going into part of that area. I'm a little disappointed that it's taken an already improved area and that we're not getting to improve some of the other area. So my comments, comments tonight were just to encourage this board, and I think all the candidates are in the audience who possibly may be on next year's board, that don't let that project drop. You know, let's try to get that cleaned up, and especially along the Canyon Lake Drive there, where, you know, it's one of the first things people see when they come in the gates. But it falls right in line with the presentation there, because I saw a lot of projects that have come into fruition, and then about three years down the road, when Renee was talking about them, it said, "Planning for." And in the three years previous to that, why it was finally being implemented. So I know it's gonna take some time, but I really would like to keep Outrigger Park, especially along Canyon Lake Drive, in there at the top of everybody's thoughts as they go ahead with plans for the coming years. Thank you. And congratulations on extending Eric and Pat's contracts. I think that's a very wise move.
Thank you, Travis. Any other comments?
No other comments.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that the board would like to move from the consent agenda? All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
Great, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to our board action items. First action item, eight point one, Carrie Pratt, or Lynn, are you gonna do that? Okay. This is for approval of the Canyon Lake Club sanction request for the Firefighters Association.
Yes, good evening. Actually, I'm gonna make this a little bit larger. Okay, so a little background on this. The Canyon Lake Property Owners Association has received a request from the Canyon Lake Firefighters Association seeking approval as a sanction club. As required per the sanction club policy, the club has submitted the following documents. List of club officers, signed club forms, gate access, copy of the club's new, current, and updated bylaws as approved by the membership, and then what the bylaws require, and a roster. Side note, the Firefighters Association does not meet the policy requirements, but they have provided a letter asking for an exception. Staff asked the board to review the letter for its consideration. The fiscal impact would include the costs associated for use of the facilities in common areas, any liability costs incurred by the association for use of the facilities and amenities, and administrative costs for overseeing and managing clubs for the association. Total cost to be determined. It would be the same as with all the other clubs. It's recommended the Board of Directors review and approve or reject the Firefighters Association as a sanction club.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion? What is your motion, by the way? To...
Discuss?
There we go. Thanks, I didn't hear that part, sorry. We already have our second. All right, with that, for discussion?
Yeah, I'm, you know, we have a club requirements for all the clubs, and the clubs work, spend hours and days trying to make sure they stay within our requirements, and one of those is, you know, seventy-five percent community members or homeowners that live here. This, this particular club has two people that live here. My feeling is, is this, this club or sanctioning request could easily be covered by the first responders' club. There's already a club that actually would incorporate these, this group, and there's no reason they can't operate under that club already. So I struggle a little bit about approving clubs. I don't wanna make anybody that's been here a long time, I think the community, the POAs had times where they've had to clean up the clubs and spend a lot of man-hours, and we have a lot of clubs on the books that man-hours are already used for every single, every single year. So I don't think we wanted to start making exceptions to the clubs in the rosters.
You know, I was speaking to a person who moved into Canyon Lake recently, and they were asking how to get involved here, and I said, you know, if you wanna make friends, join a club, and if you wanna lose them, join the board. And I feel like that in this, in this situation. You know, when you're on the board, you need to make unpleasant decisions, and I gotta tell you, I am completely appreciative of our firefighters and what they do for our community. I do, I do like and appreciate, again, all that they do. I recognize that our firefighters live here for a good part of the day, for four days a week. But I believe the intent of our rule on sanctioning is, is, the reason for the seventy-five percent is those seventy-five percent are, represent the, the member owners of the property. And it is a little bit different, and so, so for that reason, like Alex, I also struggle with an exception on such a significant level to, to grant this as a, as a sanction club.
Any other comments?
I too have just one problem with them becoming a club. So they're applying for this, and you have to be a Canyon Lake firefighter to be a part of the club. It's not open to the general public, and every club that we have here is open to all the members of the community. And that is one requirement that I think we should stand by.
Yeah, this one, I think, tugs at everybody's heartstrings. We all like to take care of our firefighters, but to Tim's point, it is true that it wouldn't be open to all members of the community. That's quite a big difference. And they're pretty far from qualifying for the, under the normal requirements. And, you know, one thing we strive for as a board is consistency in the administration of our rules and regulations. And in this case, I, I would like to see the firefighters maybe find another avenue, as Director Cook, Alex Cook, recommended, because they, again, I wish them well, but I, they don't really meet the current qualifications. Thank you.
And I just echo everything that my fellow board members say, have said. I will encourage this for them to strongly consider joining the Veterans and First Responders Group. It is a phenomenal group. My husband is both. And for anyone in the audience who isn't and is a veteran or a first responder, you guys see a lot of things, and often you hold it inside and not, and you choose not to share it. More from, I think, a bravery standpoint and love for your family, but it's a great organization and club for people to just be able to be themselves. So I hope that they do move forward and reach out to this club. So with that, is there...
Can I make a motion to reject them as a club?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to decline in a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of declining their request to be a sanction club, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
We're gonna move on to the next one, sanctioning the Canyon Lake Clear Foundation. And we'll go back to Lynn.
Hi again. Okay, so I'll try to get through this one a little bit quicker since it's similar. The Canyon Lake POA received a request from Canyon Lake Enrichment Activities and Recreation Foundation, always known as CLEAR for those inquiring. They're seeking approval as a sanction club, and as required, they submitted the following documents. And then a note at the bottom, the Clear Foundation packet does meet all the policy requirements. It is the same fiscal impact. It is recommended that the Board of Directors review and approve or reject the CLEAR group as a sanction club effective May.
So thank you.
I need to make an announcement. I, I am a member of this club, of this committee, of this group, and I'm also on the board, so as a result, I need to recuse myself from this discussion.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, clear.
Second.
Second. All right, any discussion? All in favor? We have a discussion.
I'm gonna say something. If you guys don't know about this club as a community or this group, this is something that I think the community has been begging for, for the last twenty years. You know, a way to give back to the youth. I think I've heard talk about junior lifeguards in this community since I've lived here. They've come and gone. We used to have them at the pool, and I don't, we might still. But I think this is such an incredible, great program, and that can, it has the ability to really change the lives of a lot of our youth in the community, and I can't say anything more positive than that. There, it's really incredible, and I wanna thank all you guys, Casey, Jeremy, Mr. Morton, everybody that's been involved to make that happen, so I'm a hundred percent for this club.
Any other comments? I'll just add, I enjoyed last year when they had the tryouts in the lake, and these little, well, everyone's little to me, but these little kids in this very cold water, and I'm happy this year it gets to be in a warm pool, swimming their little hearts out to qualify. The other thing I'm particularly excited about, is I remember my first year, last year, joining the board, and there was a lot of contention between the wakeboard and the skiboard club. We were discussing the North Lake area, and that got resolved, and they ended up resolving that themselves right before the board meeting. They came to us with their solution. And fast forward to now, they're gonna work together with the Clear Foundation and put on what I'm sure is gonna be an absolutely fantastic event, a weekend for these kids to remember. So I wanna thank CLEAR for doing that and organizing that and working with both the skiing and wakeboard club. It's gonna be fantastic. So with that, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four in favor, one recusal, motion carried.
Come on back, Bill. Brad, if you wanna pretend like you're angry and shouting, like, I can't believe it. Here he comes. All right, we're good. Come back in. All right, we're gonna move on. This is approval for the senior work group member appointment. Back to Lynn.
Okay, a little background on this. Nancy Green has been recommended by the senior work group to be appointed as a new member. The senior work group voted at their meeting to, for approval on March seventh. It's recommended the Board of Directors appoint this member to the senior work group to fill a vacancy.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving Nancy Green to the senior work group, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
Next one, Steve Scheider, Recreation Committee Member Appointment.
Good evening. There's an opening on the Recreation Committee. John and Morton has been selected for the open position after discussion. The committee accepted his application. As recommended, the Board of Directors approve the appointment of John and Morton to the Recreational Committee at the meeting. I wanna kind of amend that to also signing a confidentiality agreement.
Do I hear a motion?
Make the motion. Second.
All right, discussion? Well, I'm gonna have a discussion. John is amazing, and she is president of our JWC. When I first, and I just want you guys to know her, since she's gonna be on this committee, aside from being young, which I think is great to bring in fresh ideas, she, when I first met her, she's incredibly personal and bubbly, and you just wanna be around her, and then you're around her more, and you're like, you are wickedly smart. And she's fantastic, so I'm so excited that she's gonna be on this committee. So that was my only comment. So with that, all in favor of approving John and Morton, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor, motion carried.
All right, last one on our board action items. Revised Rule LM, for approval of Revised Rule LM six point one nine, secure moored boats required at dock, Amanda Moore.
This is just an approval for the twenty-eight day reading that we went over last month. Essentially, the Rules Review Committee was tasked with reviewing the current LM six point one nine rule that pertains to tying boats to docks in a way that will not impede the navigational waterway. We're recommending that the board approve to revise Rule LM six point one nine, which will now read, "All docked boats must be secured. All docked boats must not impede the navigational waterway of any cove. Boats adrift may be impounded at owner's expense with a one hundred dollar fine."
Thank you, Amanda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Who wants to be second?
Second.
Which cook? Oh, okay. All right, are there any member comments? All right, board discussion?
I just, I'm on the liaison for the Rules Committee. I wanted to give just a little background of why this has come about. There's been a lot of tight coves, let's say, in the East, East Bay, that it only takes a couple side it only takes a couple side ties and it's, the waterway is blocked. So this was a way to try to control some of those people in deep coves who are starting to have a hard time maybe getting boats out certain holidays when boats are double tied, side tied and stuff like that. So that was the, this is really the premise of what this is about. So boats that people live in deep in coves, they can still get out and don't have to walk their boat out or so forth. So that was kind of the background of this and this is why this came about.
Appreciate that. Alex, any other board comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Amanda, when was the last time this was up, this was reviewed or modified? Do you know what, what kind of year this was modified last, the ruling? Never? Because the question that I always asked you is, what's the justification for 100 instead of 50?
So a couple of reasons for that. So one, I think the, well, I don't think the Rules Committee fills that $50 for a citation really doesn't have enough bite. From a staff perspective, where you're trying to get fines to start at the $100 level because it comes full circle with our IDR member bad standing process, which essentially you have to have at least a balance of $100 to get triggered for notification of IDR. So if we have a $50 citation and let's say we have a naughty member who decides not to pay that for years and years and years, they're not going to ever be notified that they have this balance. And they're essentially not going to have to really face those consequences. So those two reasons together is why the committee chose $100.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, all in favor of approving rule LM 6.19? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Five in favor. Motion carried.
All right, we're gonna move on to our association reports. Eric, you're up. That went fast.
You see me still writing over here? I'll, I'll wing the rest. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Election season here is in full swing. Our favorite time of year here at the POA, every year, year in, year out. I want to say that I had a good meeting with Mayor Smith this month, gotten to know our new city manager, Nicole Daly, on a couple different meetings. I had a conversation with her and Chief Latendras today, earlier today, on a partnership with the city, working on a welcome package that the POA has already been working on. And they reached out to us to see if we would be interested in collaborating with them on some ideas the fire department has in, including a welcome package. I told them, we're already working on something like that for new members. We already have a website developed, Welcome Canyon Lake. I don't have it in front of me, but the website's been done for a while. The outer packaging for this welcome package is already done. And so we're going to be collaborating with the city on including some of their items in that welcome package. We, our two teams, us and the city, are working, Renee mentioned this a little bit, working on drafts of the fire station purchase and sale agreement. We've also agreed to meet with the city with representative from both sides. And the next step will be decide when that meeting is. I expect it'll be this month on a variety of topics. Rumor has it, I want to address this, I think this is maybe already been addressed on social media, excuse me, that we were not going to have a fireworks show this year. That rumor is not true. We are definitely having a fireworks show. Just like we always do, it's the biggest event in Canyon Lake and there's no way we would not have that event. So I just want to clear that up. Speaking of misinformation, we're really trying to educate the community on how things work here. Renee just went through this modernizing Canyon Lake document. If you haven't read it, there's a stack of them out on our sign-in table. It's also on our website. We're trying to educate people. There's a lot of misinformation, of misconception about how projects get developed here. And that document does a really good job of clearing that up. I want to quickly run through just an example of how our current solar project was developed. In August of 2013, a full 10 years ago, our Board of Directors, which had Bruce Yarborough and Don Haggerty and others, then asked then General Manager Chris Mitchell to develop and release an RFP for a solar project. In 2015, excuse me, a solar project very similar to this one was presented to the community. In 2016 and 2017, boards decided not to move forward with that particular contractor for a variety of reasons. And in 2019, President Dale Welty and Director Genie Odell, who's, I think, here tonight, hi Genie, and Chris Poland and others directed staff to enter into negotiations with another solar provider. So in 2020, 21, and 2022, we discussed various, discussed by various boards, fully vetted by the Finance Committee and the FPC committees through this process of community involvement and community collaboration. And our committees made up of your peers, which anyone is invited to attend, the 2022 board finally executed a solar power purchase agreement with Centrica, and that was last year's board. This is how all projects get approved here. Nothing happens overnight. The solar project has been in development for a full decade. You might notice that at our open session meetings, our Director of Operations, Steve and I, who handle all of our projects, we don't vote on these projects. The Boards of Directors, which can and sometimes do change every single year, they represent the community and they vote on these projects. And our job is to carry the ball from one board to the next board to the next board. So like I said, the solar project's been in development for 10 years. The, please refer to that document that's out on the table for all the other projects that are ongoing here. None of these things come out of thin air. The community is involved every step of the way. We have open session meetings. We sometimes have town halls. We have Finance Committee meetings vetting the financial aspects of these projects. We have Facilities Planning Committee meetings. The solar, the, I think the solar project, which project was 20 times on the FPC agenda? Oh, the, the main gate medians project and the landscaping. So there's lots of conversations about all these projects. They don't just pop up out of nowhere. If you have questions and you want to give input, go to these committee meetings, come to board meetings. The number one thing is board meetings. We talk about all these things at these board meetings over and over and over. And if you come to the board meetings, you won't be surprised when you see a new project pop up. Other than that, I want to say, excuse me, the lodge project, the patio portion is delayed due to excessive rain. Hopefully now we have better weather. The mud will dry out and get the rebar and the concrete in the ground. During the construction, we've had three successful weddings, Fine Arts Guild concert, several other large events. The Benelli Wedding for April 15th is on schedule and we've made accommodations for them by renting a floor down on the beach. Some of you may have seen that. We've had at least one wedding at that venue, maybe two. And they were, those parties were very happy. The interior bar remodel is going great. We're gonna have 10 beers on tap at the patio window, 12 beers and cocktails on the, at the inside bar. And the solar project is wrapping up here at the lodge and they will be moving over to the country club in the coming weeks. And that's all I have for tonight. I do want to thank the board for their confidence in me and renewing my contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate all that. And that's exhausting. Community Patrol reports, I would encourage everyone to go through the packet. There's a lot of great information in there. And they take a lot of time to prepare all this for you. So I would encourage you to go through that. And now we're going to go to Board Comments. Who wants to start? Tim?
Sure. Canyon League Veterans and First Responders Group, we could go put on a fundraiser for Officer Heaney who passed away on railroad Canyon Road. We did this over at Canyon Cowboy. And I'll tell you, this community does not disappoint. The turnout was just amazing. The family was grateful. I don't have an exact, but I know last time we looked, it was over $20,000 that we raised for this family in a three-hour period. This community is just amazing and I thank you all.
I would like to re-congratulate Eric on the two awards he received from his community, California Association of Community Managers, I get that right? I always say that awards aren't given, they're earned. And Eric was up against some other large-scale community managers and he came away with not one but two awards. It's really quite a feat. So I just want to take a second to re-congratulate Eric on those awards. Well deserved.
Alex?
I usually go first and I steal everybody's thunder, so. It's okay, I'm probably gonna steal Renee's thunder a little bit. I too want to reiterate what Tim just said, that fundraiser last Tuesday at Canyon Cowboy was incredible. It really shows what this community is about, raising money for somebody that's fallen, for a family. And it made me proud that Tim made sure I was going to be there. It was really nice. Number two, last weekend, Junior Women's Club Golf Tournament. I feel very fortunate. It's probably about the fifth or sixth time I've played in the tournament over the last 15 years. It's always fun. It goes back to a great cause. It helps pay, give scholarships. My kids, two out of my three kids got scholarships from them. So I always feel indebted to play and donate. They helped my kids college tuition. That was really incredible and just thank you for putting on a great show. I know, excuse, excuse me, I know how many volunteer hours it does to take, take to put a golf tournament on because I used to put golf tournaments on. Number three is the yacht club. Did an event on Sunday, Sunday, and it was the chrisping of the boats. Like, it's a kind of a fairly new event and it was, I can't wait for next year, let's put it that way. It was just a really fun experience and what a fun club to just even be around. So it was super incredible and it just, you know, this last week and this community and all those events just makes me proud to be where I live. And just thank you guys for volunteer hours in the clubs.
Not to be Debbie Downer, but I'm gonna start with a concern I have. And that is with the, with the weather getting better with, now that we're on spring break, our vandalism has, has risen to a new and frankly, pretty discouraging level recently. We've had events, I think if you look at our reports on, in the report that's available to everyone, I think we had 15 events against POA facilities, but more, more so even than that, we've seen a very concerning rise in, in, in things against homeowners. And in particular, I'm concerned about the seniors of our community. There are some, some of our seniors, I'll say, are being significantly harassed by, by groups of teenagers on, up and down Continental here on Canyon Club Drive. The ding dong ditcham, I'm sorry, is, it's not just kids being kids. It's not funny when kids, that's happening at at 11, 12, 1, 2 in the morning. It's distressing to, to many of our people. I will tell, I get a number of calls from people. There's a woman in our community who had throat cancer. She had half of her tongue removed. And when these kids are coming in and banging on her door, she's scared. She can't call anyone because she can't speak. And this is, I mean, this is harassment. We have a homeowner who, who four nights in a row now has been egged with eggs. And, and, and we need to do something as a community. I know we say that the crime is a nuisance here, but I believe this goes to another level and we have to do something. So I've reached out to the, to the mayor and ask if, you know, plead with him to say, look, we, we the POA, and so I'm going to challenge the POA and the city to do something to, to regain control. And let's, let's bring kindness back to Canyon Lake. We need to do something there. On a happier note, I, I attended the, I want to thank the guild. The concert we had in here on Saturday was a lot of fun. It was a great time, a Tom Petty concert and so forth. And, you know, everyone had, had a great, I'm not a big Tom Petty fan, but I gotta tell you, I had a lot of fun. It was, I didn't realize how much I liked the music. But the guild always does a tremendous job with that. We have a few challenges that we've got with, just with our, our stadium and some of the new state rules that are being enforced. And again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna challenge the city and the POA to work together to find a solution to, to let people have fun. And, and I don't want to feel like I'm, I'm stuck in a Footloose movie. I mean, we need to find a way to have, let people dance. And then last but not least, you know, two of our, my colleagues here at this table, four other candidates, did a forum last Thursday. I'm, I'm very impressed at our, at our Chamber of Commerce, but did it, it is hard to get up in front of everybody to be asked a question and have a minute, think of all the things you're gonna say and to say in a minute. And I think they all did a phenomenal job. They, I think all of their strengths showed. And if you haven't seen it, I want to encourage everyone, review it. It's available online. And more importantly, be informed, get out and vote. Let's get this vote done without having to go to a second quorum.
Thank you very much. I'll tack, I'll, I'll tack on to the election before I go on to my fun stuff. There is going to be another Meet the Candidates. It's going to be hosted by the Senior Work Group at the Senior Center. That will be on Saturday, the 15th at 9:30, showing in the calendar at 9:30 in the morning. And they plan to do the same thing where members can come and write down their questions. And they will read their questions to the candidates and the candidates will get an opportunity to hear them. So if you have any questions that weren't answered at the last one, or you just want to go again, please come. And they're working really hard to make that. But they'll have coffee and they're going with donut holes this time. So coffee and donut hole. So if you don't like the answer, maybe you throw the donut hole at the candidate. I don't know. So there's options. The other thing I'd like to let everyone know, Donna Ritchie in the, through the Canyon Lake Insider, she is having, or she's sending to each candidate questions. And there's going to be a series of five of them. The first one was released, might have been yesterday or the day before. And going forward, every Saturday in the evening, depending on how many typos that each candidate submits, because it's due from, from us by 5:00 PM. But she'll have that out. So please take a look and check on either her Facebook page, the Canyon Lake Insider Facebook page, or check on our website to see what those questions are and the answers from the candidates, either Saturday evening, or that can be your fun Sunday morning. But we'll be, you know, the candidates are taking time to respond to that. So I encourage you all to take a look at that. Onto fun stuff. I always say if you're bored in Canyon Lake, it's because you just haven't gone outside. This, I'm still on a high from this weekend. Starting with the event by the Veterans and First Responders Group. Thank you, Tim Cook, and to your entire team for putting that on and being a part of raising over $20,000. It's fun to get into a bidding war when you know the ultimate winner is going to be a family who I'll sleep at that. So thank you very much for, well done. And then we move on to the Meet the Candidates. Thank you so much to the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to Jeremy Smith for taking time away from his family to be here and supporting the POA by running through all those questions. So that was a great night. And then I move over to going and preparing for the JWC Golf Tournament, having champagne at Jonda and Brad Morton's house as we're packing swag bags, trying to make this the best event ever to the following day, being in a helicopter flying over Canyon Lake and dropping golf balls and being grateful that my seatbelt did not snap at any one point in time. To going to the guild, pretty much exhausted, but enjoying Tom Petty, although I only knew about three or four songs, but enjoying that concert, to the amazing blessing of the boats and just the hugest thanks to the yacht club and especially Commodore Ron Wilbur. He undertook a lot with his board to put that on. They arranged to have a small cannon there. And even though it was only this big, I, and I saw it being lit. I screamed both times. I guess it was a 12-gauge shotgun shell that went off, but it was fantastic. So if you missed out this year, make sure you watch for next year. It was, it's just amazing to be in this community. Whatever happens in the election, I'm so glad to be here. There's just so much fun to do. Watch the calendar on the POA website because anything that a club's doing or the community's doing, it's there. Please, please, please follow us on Instagram or Facebook because you'll see a lot more stuff on there as well. So with that, I think that's it. I hope that's it. With that, we're going to take a short recess because we do have some appeals the board needs to address. Gentlemen, are you good with 10 minutes? All right, we'll go ahead and take a recess then. Thank you, everyone. And if you have any questions, we'll be here. All right, we're gonna go ahead and start. Thank you everyone for your patience, so page 122 to the board. ACC appeals for Casey Thompson. Is Casey Thompson's are here?
Yes, that is correct, thank you very much and good evening. A new home was approved for the Thompsons on January 30th of 2020. After several other meetings and several other applications was, was rejected, a secondary change was submitted and approved on May 27th of 21. For front yard landscape design with conditions of the one-third landscape requires appeared to have been met. Sidewalks to the left of the home to be DG. The Thompsons requested more time to complete the build, so the committee went to the property to review the progress. It was determined that the member concreted the landscaped area to the right of the property viewed from the street. Please see Exhibits 2 and 3. So Exhibits 2 and 3 is of the original plan. They gave them seven days to submit the change application and a letter was sent. A change application was submitted for review on December 1st of 2022, and then once again on December 29th of 2022. At both meetings, the committee denied the application and plan due to two rules, PC 5.10, which is for the driveways, and PC 8.1 for the requirements not being met for the landscaping. The newly poured concreted driveway to the right of the property would block the front view of the home, and the one-third landscape requirements were not met. The lands, the landscape strips in the driveway are not a part of the calculations as referenced in PC 5.10. The false grade that was mentioned in the members' appeal is to be determined. Picture shows that the grade was higher prior to the concrete being poured, and in my opinion, I believe that false grade was not being done. The landscape is short approximately 55 square feet, however, the bigger issue is the driveway to the right of the home. Once a vehicle is parked, it will block the front view of the home. I've put on the, the, the appeal, the, the action item here. PC 5.10 for driveways and additional parking, and I highlighted a yellow area. Members must provide measurements and calculations for the one-third landscape requirements. Decorative ribbons and landscaping materials such as artificial grass or rocks may be installed in concrete, but the ribbons will not be used for the calculation of the one-third requirement. Under PC 6.2, details of the improvement, I highlighted list of improvements or modifications for which the architectural approval is sought. So they have to list out everything. If you look in the exhibits, the exhibit one is of the actual property. Exhibit two is the summary, the legend. And if you see on the second page or the third page, which is exhibit three, it, we actually highlighted in the original build, what would be landscape? What would be concrete, what would be ground cover, so on and so forth. And in the area in which there was concrete poured, it was supposed to be landscape. And so you'll see the dotted area in there. So moving forward. On PC 6.3A, contents of plan, I highlighted all existing and proposed structures, including fences, decks, patios, driveways, walkways, walls, retaining walls, etc. Shall be submitted on the plan. These are all the areas in which we have had a little bit of difficulty. So at this present time, what we are requesting is, is staff recommends that the Board of Director uphold the ACC Committee's decision and deny the members' request for it to be built as is. And so at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Mr. Casey to go ahead and state your appeals.
How you doing? Casey is my wife, Rihanna. It's 3718 and 186 for the Tractin Lot. Do appreciate the, the appeals process and the board members' time and consideration. The, so the, the plan that was shown there that was done by our architect was done, you know, years prior to starting to build a house. They just threw something together on that, we never planned to do that exact front yard, which is why we, we submitted the change request, which is the one that was, is hand drawn out there. So that one actually shows the additional parking on the side, as well as our plans to do the following, you know, that, that picture there. So that we submitted, that was all approved, so that's why we built it that way. The, the reason that we didn't make the one-third was a little bit of a misunderstanding there on my part, in that the, if you look at planter box number five there, that one, still there, yeah, you can go back up to the hand drawing. But a huge portion of that planter box number five isn't allowed to be considered as front yard landscaping, to my understanding, because it's, exists after the 20, 27-foot setback that we have on San Joaquin. So the reason we're trying to get a variance approved to build as is, because that, the way that rule was, was described to me was that a house, in theory, could be built all the way up to the setback. So we're not gonna allow any landscaping that's beyond that setback to be included in the front yard. I think a reasonable person, you ask a thousand out of a thousand, does that, does that house have, you know, is, is that, does that planter box exist in that person's front yard? Yes, is it landscape? Yes. Why not just accept the entire front yard area as, as, as a, the, the totality of the front yard area, consider all of it in the landscaping plan? So if we include all planter box number five there, we, we more than meet, we more than meet the one-third. The false grade, I, I think the false grade claim on the retaining wall on the eastern side, that could have been a little bit of a misunderstanding, depending on when, when the board viewed that area because of the neighbors' construction. We've got a number of photos that we could show that that grade was low. We've got a number of photos that we could show that that grade was level out to the property line prior to the the neighbor starting their build. So once they cut all that down, they actually cut down an additional five feet or so in so that they could get to where their sunken foundation was. Once that sunken foundation was built, they could only backfill to that level, which left us with that five-foot sheer spot there. So the only thing we could do to make our plans or to build the house according to plan was to build that five-foot wall. We asked for that five-foot wall, and that allowed us to get to that RV parking on that eastern side that we were looking for. So we would ask that the the false grade. So that, yeah, so all we did really was restore the grade with that wall that we built there. It wasn't, we didn't create that grade.
If I might say, we're we're not, it's not here tonight for the false grade. We've already determined that there was not a false grade. We're here just for the actual landscaping and the blocking of the the front view of the home.
Okay. Yeah, you know what? So I'll I'll fess up to the blocking of the front front yard. I actually wasn't familiar with that with that rule when I when I drew this up and submitted it. But in my defense, that was approved. So that that plans change was approved to be built like that.
You've got to come up.
We did think the grass in Lake Two was counted as landscaping, but.
Yeah, that was also our fault, our fault, you know.
So if I might say something here, the the project was completed and done without an application for a change. The change was put in after the project was completed. So.
Basically, the area that's on on the right side where you see plants now was never permitted to be parking.
Where we see driveway.
Which is which is now concrete, obviously.
Yeah, the the additional part. The additional part, I could have to go back and look at my records, I guess. I spend a lot of time out of the country. I'm not 100% sure. I mean, I drew all this up and submitted it, and I remember getting it approved. But the additional parking there, I mean, if if I could mention that San Joaquin, I'm sure you're all familiar, there there isn't a lot of parking, a lot of street parking available. There's no golf carts. As soon as the two homes are built on either side of us, we were gonna have nowhere for people to park, which is why why we we wanted that special extra parking area. That that plan there, yeah, we we that was just like a generic one that those that the architect put on there. We were always gonna try and figure out what we wanted to do with the front, because he initially had like a propane up there and stuff. We knew we weren't gonna do that. But the plans had already been submitted at that point, so we just figured we would do a change change later for the front yard.
Any. No, it's good. Any questions from the board?
I've got a question. It was the we've got it looks like there's two curb cuts, right, on on two sides? Were two curb cuts approved? Do were two curb.
Correct. He put in two curb cuts. Is that?
Question is, were two were two two curb cuts approved?
Not not originally, no. It's just one on the left side in front of the garage.
Was it ever amended to include a second curb cut?
There was a second one made, yes.
Was it was it was it approved?
No, that's it's part of this permit that you're looking at now.
And the other question I have is on the turf inlays. If that were to be included, I I can see that it's not included. But if it were to be included, would that how much how many more square feet would that add?
The so he's actually, there's a little typo in the thing. He's actually short 86 square feet. So when they originally did what they did, they that it just wasn't permitted. It was only permitted in front of the single or the one garage door. And so we were kind of surprised when we out there. But there was an original plan to have parking on the left side to go up along the side of the house, sort of RV parking area. So that was kind of planned, but that was not approved at that time. And this is part of that permit now that he wants you to approve. If I may, PC 5.10, parking in front of the house is the big thing.
He was stating that that there's two rule violations, 8.1 and also 5.10. But I also would like to make a point that San Joaquin is a difficult street. And it's something that the committee probably would not, you know, do a variance for, even because we have, you know, a lot of properties there that have to deal with the same thing that are constrained to the one driveway instead of having a full driveway. And so I think that might have been something that could have been talked about during one of our meetings, but I don't believe it was ever talked about.
One of the problems that you do have on San Joaquin is that the fire department has requested from the POA to redline one whole curb. So that makes parking on the lakeside is is all you have. So this doing two curb cuts like that did have, you know, took out a parking spot. Parking is tight on that street, very tight on the street, so.
So are you saying, John, that you would recommend to not to go along with this?
I'm sorry.
Are you saying that you would agree with giving?
No, we're we're still feel it's a PC 5.10 violation and 8.1 for landscaping, because he's short the landscaping he needs. So I don't know what else I can say. He's short and he, which we don't normally allow blocking of the front view of the home on the on the right side of the house, that is the front view of the home. The left side is the garage area.
So if I could, I mean, if if we're saying we could park on the curb, if I didn't do that, any car that's parked on that curb is gonna block the front view of the house. So what's the difference on that?
That's not how the rule reads it.
What what John meant to say is the extra curb cut detracts from parking that is available on the street and an already narrow street with a red curb on the other side. So we didn't want to give more parking lost in front of that house.
And it added it added two spots for us. Yeah, and then and and then we have enough spot for one additional car in the center. That's what we were trying to achieve was more parking, no, not less.
But I think it's your point that neighbors who have friends over have less spaces to park because of the curb cut, right?
Thank you.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you can see from the plan that one, in front of the garage, the driveway is 18 feet wide, and on the right side in front of the house, that's 16 feet wide. Plus, he also has a spot where you can park between the planter and the front door. Kind of a U-shaped parking area.
Any other questions? No? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to uphold the ACC's recommendation.
I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion from the board?
I'll just make a cut.
I I don't have any questions, but here's my my thoughts. There's two things. Like what's been said, San Joaquin is probably the tightest, hardest street in all the community. It's really should be one-way. Parking's an issue. Street parking's an issue. And I have a belief is if any way you can get more cars into your own property than sitting on the street, it's kind of the better way to go. This is a tough one. It's hard to put the genie back in the bottle. You know, you spent a lot of money on concrete, and it's gonna cost just as much to remove it and redo it and redoing the curbs and stuff like that. Next thing you know, you're in for $30,000. So, you know, I'm kind of leaning to the point of approving it, in my opinion.
Yeah, my comment is, first first of all, that you've built a lovely home, and I actually it's one of the things that actually helps improve the community, and I certainly always look like to look at that as it is any things are considered. I think you've done that, given, again, I I think the the issue with the not enough landscaping, I you know, for six square feet off, the fact that we've got the the additional turf in between, whether it's turf or, just my opinion, with turf or DG or something, I think it's close enough that that I I would I would sympathize with that. And and I agree, I think, again, with with the parking situation on San Joaquin. This actually, I think, helps it. It it creates some other issues, but but I I think we ought to try and find some, in my opinion, I think we ought to try and find a way to to approve this.
And I'll just, again, your home is stunning, so well done on that. My thing, I sympathize for the neighbors and their visitors who, while it's great that you have now more places to park, you're, you know, and have your friends, it takes away from your neighbors being able to have that. I would actually be fine with the variance on the landscape portion, but have that curb put back in. And I know that it would be a variance on blocking the front of the home, but I understand what you were saying, if someone's parking in front, but it just gives options to the neighbors to be able to park there if they'd like. Because I want to be sympathetic to them, especially since other one, you know, their homes are being built. And I, you know, remind the board what we do for one, we have to do for the other. And if we do this for one, the next person's gonna do it, and we have to give the next variance. So that would be my, but it's gorgeous, and I would love to see a curb back there and the other stuff I would be fine with. Any other member comments? All right, so we have a motion and a second to uphold. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Are you in favor? To against? Motion carried.
Yes, so at this point in time, if you can go ahead and contact us tomorrow, we can come up with some sort of a solution to help you out. Just come on to the office, or you can give us a call, or you can email, and we can set up a time.
Next is Cody Burt.
Hello, thank you.
All right, do you wanna go?
All right, thank you very much. On April 7th of 2022, Mr. Burt was approved for DG Concrete Pad to resize a planter box and to expand the concrete patio. The application was approved with the conditions that DG must be properly installed and compacted, or it's just considered dirt. Block stucco to match will be six inches to the 36 inches in height. That would be under Exhibit 1. Inspection was conducted on October 17th of 2022, and the inspector noted that the measurements did not match, and the project was not to plan. Parking strips were installed, not a walkway. A change application required. Nowhere on the plan or application did it notate parking strips to be installed installed or RV parking strips as directed by Mr. Burt. That's on Exhibit number 2. An interim letter was sent to Mr. Burt requesting an application for the change to the plan, and on November 12th, on 2022, a change application was submitted and reviewed by the ACC Committee on December 1st. The committee denied the application. It was installed without approval. The plan does not meet PC 5.10 and PC 8.1 requirements. Need to remove the first 29 feet measured from the back of the curb. The committee requests a meeting with the member at the property. The DG needs to be restored. The committee met again at the property on January 5th and the final time on January 12th. Application still was denied. Plot plan does not match. Measurements and calculations are still required. It appears that there is only 116 square feet of landscape, which would not meet PC 8.1. Landscape requirements are 401 square feet. Additionally, the parking strip blocks the front view of the home in violation of PC 5.1. Staff recommends that the Board of Director uphold the ACC Committee's decision and deny the members' request. Before I go ahead and give the speak mic over to Mr. Burt, I'd just like to point out on Exhibit 1, this was the actual approved plan. And as you can see, the area in question, if you look at Exhibit 2, it shows parking strips. Exhibit 1 shows what we considered a walkway to go all the way to the back. So that would be the difference. And due to that, the strips being there, it was PC 8.1 and PC 5.10. So at this point in time, I'm gonna go ahead and give Mr. Burt the mic.
Thank you. When I started this project, the first thing that I did was go to the POA and ask them for a plot map, you know, so I could see what my my land was. And I I don't remember the woman's name, but her and I actually sat at the front desk for probably an hour and a half, and she watched me draw all this out. I did this all in the POA. I already knew what I wanted to do, and I had it all there. I had my markers. I had everything. While I was doing that, several times, it was mentioned that this was parking. I mean, who puts a walkway from, I mean, even just, nobody puts a walkway from their front curb to their back of their house, two strips that are only 24 inches wide. You know, you you get the idea of what's going on here. And I spoke with her, and nothing was said if I needed to get a permit or anything like that. I told her it would be DG. We looked at the amount of DG on this side of the strip, the amount of DG in between them on the side. Obviously, just by looking at that picture, those cement strips are much less than one-third of the the landscape out front. So I thought we we had this completely done, and they approved it, and I said, all right, we're good to go. So I built it exactly like it is. Each of those strips is 24 inches wide, 72 feet from my front curb to the back curb. I do, I I don't really agree with it blocks the view, my front yard. Sure, if I had cars parked all the way, which I don't, you can see from the picture, I parked my boat all the way in the back so that it's tucked in that corner, where really all I'm blocking is white vinyl fence. You can still see my my palm trees in the front and my front door and all that stuff. And and we did meet with several members on multiple occasions. And I'm happy to fill out a request or do whatever, you know, whatever I gotta do to get approved. If all I needed to do was a permit, I would have done that. But that wasn't ever really given to me as an option. It was like, no, you have to remove this 28 feet. So when I asked, well, what if I want to park my boat back there? Do I get rid of the 28 feet or, you know, the first 28 feet of cement and just drive over landscaping? And I was like, yeah, you can do that. Well, that's trashy. I don't want to do that. I don't want to drive over my landscaping to park my boat in the back. I take my boat out a lot, so that's a couple of times a week during the summer. I'm gonna groove it out, and it's, you know, that's just not, I just don't see driving over my landscape instead of having two 24-inch wide strips, 28 feet long, instead of just having a whole big DG patch. So that's what I'll do. I'll take out the cement, just put in DG and drive over it every day, which that just doesn't make sense to me. If you're trying to make the neighborhood look better, you have two clean strips of cement versus me rutting out some DG all summer long.
Any questions from the board?
So I have a question. So I'm just looking at the plan. I only see one strip, not two. I'm just trying to make sure I'm seeing the right thing.
Sure, each red line is a strip, sorry, and in between them, you can see it's written DG. So it's DG to the left of the red line, DG in between the red lines, DG to the right of the red lines. And at the top, you can see that each of those red lines are labeled 24 inches wide.
Okay, so each individual red line is 20, oh, okay. Yeah, I thought it was one single walking path.
We saw the same thing. We see DG and then a long, single walkway. The same thing you're seeing. And then when we went out to inspect it, it was two. And then, by the way, there was something, was it a big toy holder or what was it parked there? It was right in front, in front of your boat.
Yes, there is a trailer there, just because of what happened up at the campsite, but that's not mine. I'm just letting a buddy store it until he can find a place after the fire.
One of the requirements that we have in our rules is that a third party has to understand the plans in the application. And if you read the application, which is in the board packet, it doesn't talk about, you know, strips, and it doesn't talk about parking on the strips. And so when the committee reviewed it, they reviewed it as a walkway. As to the question of whether or not who would do that, that's not what we question. What we do is we look at a plan, and we look at the application and see if it meets or or if it. and see if it meets or if it does not meet with the rules and regulations and the CCNRs. So at this time, it would not, even if they were to approve it with the landscaping requirements not being met, that's just one, PC 8.1, we would still have to have the plans to be able to be accurate. And at this current time, it's not accurate, in our opinion.
Any other member comments?
So when you have parking strips like this, the DG area in between is also considered as if it were concrete, right, from, all the way from one parking strip to the other?
That's correct.
Doing the math, John, even without those strips, would the front yard be three, one-third landscaping? Without the strips for parking, would it be one-third landscaping? Because it doesn't seem like it would be.
So when the committee looked at the plan, everything in blue is where the new concrete was going to go. Everything on blue on this plan that's on the screen. The, so when we looked at this, we didn't think that that was, that those red lines were going to be parking strips. We just, we did not consider that to be parking strips at all, because if you look at how much he's doing the concrete, that was five feet wide. I mean, it would have to be larger than that on the drawing to indicate the parking strips. So when we went back the second time and looked at it, we said, what the heck are the red lines? Because we didn't figure that, because everything is traced out there. We thought maybe it might be a planter or sidewalk or something that was already existing. If you notice where he has a cement in the courtyard, that was existing. So, and there's some other things that are written in and read, so. But our solution is, is that, and what we told him was that if he took out the first 29 feet and he has DJ, DG in there, DG when it's compacted like his is, it's as hard as a rock. It's like something you can drive on. And there's a house on Canyon Lake Drive North. As a matter of fact, there are other people that have parking behind a gate or something and they drive on the DG. If it's packed, compacted like his is, it, you can drive on it and you can't even tell it that you're driving. You're not sinking into it. So if he put out the first 29 feet, he'd meet the one-third landscaping rule. He wouldn't block the house, and yet he could still drive back there and use the existing parks, parking strip, which goes back to the side of the house, the parking boat, like that's what he wanted this for.
Oh, hold on, sir. We're not, this is an appeal, a private appeal. I mean, everyone can be here. Oh, who's that?
Sorry, this is my dad and he's had, he had to meet with him two of the three times because I couldn't take work off. He's actually-
Okay, come on, I thought you were just-
No, no, sorry, sorry. No, no, he just, yeah, he's on my, he's allowed, oh, he's allowed to make decisions on my property.
Well, my question would be if you assumed that that was a sidewalk and you approved it as a sidewalk,
Wouldn't you still not have one-third-
Still be the same amount of landscaping, because the sidewalk typically is 42 inches wide. We're talking about two 24-inch wide strips.
Want to keep putting parking-
Clearly on that plan, if you look, it says 24-inch wide strips. It shows them very clearly. I mean, what they interpreted is one thing. What's on there is a completely different thing. Again, we're not trying to, we didn't come here to argue, but I mean, the plans were done, that was submitted, it was approved, and it was built exactly the way those plans are.
And I think that's the hardest part for me to understand of what he said is that there are clearly marked one line, 24 inches, says cement. Next to it, there's another line that I repeated those same numbers and the same words, 24-inch wide cement. So to think that's one walkway doesn't make any sense. Like, you can, and again, it may be the way it's interpreted, but you write something down and you see it so that it's there permanent. It's 24-inch cement, 24-inch wide cement. I don't really see how somebody looks at that with an earnest intention of seeing what it's supposed to be and not knowing that that's two strips. Sure, I understand the colors are different. The woman at PUA, and I went over that, you can see my front patio, it says cement and red, because that was pre-existing. We weren't removing that. So there was a couple of things that maybe we could have done different, but as far as, we don't know what that is. That line says 24-inch wide cement. The line next to it says 24-inch wide cement. And in five, excuse me, four different spots in between, it says DG, 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 DG.
Backtracking just a little bit and answer to his question, the area underneath parking strips is not landscaping. It's parking. And that was his question, would it not be the same? It would not.
So if it's not, if there's, if the strips look this, let's say I don't park anything there and I just say it's a walkway. The DG now counts as landscaping, but because it's parking, it doesn't? But that's what I'm saying. So if it was approved, whether it's a walkway or a parking strip, the landscape number's the same unless it changes when it's parking and when it's not.
When you have two strips, everything from the far end of one strip to the far end of the other strip is considered concrete. When you just have one walkway, that's all you're measuring is the one walkway. So that clearly has two different formulas depending on what it is.
One thing I see on the plan here, I mean, when I look at it, it says 24-inch DG. That's what it says. And so, but the, another problem is that everything you do on a project has to be on the application. And on the application, it did not say parking strips. And so, or walkway. So actually, we didn't think it was really a walkway or a parking strip. We just thought that was maybe an existing plan or possibly just 24 inches of DG going in there.
Aside from that too, we still have the other 8.1 or the 5.1 that's blocking the view of the house.
Any other questions? I'm going to think for a little bit, unless anyone has any questions. Is this the application? Okay, I just want to make sure that's what you're referring to.
So there are six items on the application and this, not one says parking strips or walkway.
Thank you. I'm going to go and ask for a motion. There's no rush on it. If you guys, I want you to, everyone to feel, know you have your time.
Yeah, I'm just really torn, because even if we allow it because of a miscommunication of parking strips versus sidewalk and looking at his plan, we're still blocking the front view of the house. And that's still another rule that we have to consider, and it's part of our rules.
When you say that it's blocking the front of the house, in the photo that we're looking at, if it stayed like that, is that considered blocking? Because I don't see how that, I see that blocking my fence, but I don't see it blocking any of the home.
So we got to look, we do this all the time. We got to think of the future. So you might leave this house in two years, 20 years, but whoever buys this after you with those parking strips are going to put a motorhome there, a boat behind that and go all, park all the way out to the curb. So, you know, the ACC and hopefully the board looks at it, not just you, but beyond you, of what is the potential of parking there? Because everybody says all the time, you know, we get this a lot. We only park our boat there. We never park there. You go by two days later, there's a boat there, there's a car there, there's, you know. I mean, it's hard, so we have to look at the whole picture, not just where your park is now. But I drove around with the ACC before and there is a large travel trailer in front of your boat there before. Clearly, it might be the first second I pulled up, I said it's blocking the front view of the house. So it's, it's hard and I understand. Even if we kind of accepted that communication on the one part, you never would have been given a permit knowing that you're parking strips there, because it was, it would be blocking the front view of the house.
And I know though, every house is different and this and that, but the thing that's kind of confusing about that is, let's say, and I, let's say I get a trailer. If I park a trailer where my wife's car is and I park my boat right there, we get rid of the 28 feet, you're not going to see any of my house regardless, and I'm going to be completely within the rules. And having said also, three houses, sorry, four houses down from me, there's a cement or an all-brick driveway. There's no landscaping at all. It's a complete brick driveway on one side of the house, there's cement driveway on the other side of the house. There's no way you see 30% of their house or landscaping. It just seems like I spent a lot of money to make my house look good instead of just parking my boat in my driveway, parking my trailer in the street, or you know, doing whatever. I get it that there are rules for a reason, but I also think, like you said earlier, then here's what, here's what's going to happen. I get rid of this concrete. I parked the trailer in my driveway and I parked my wife's car and my car in the street. I mean, what else am I going to do? I thought this would be a way to tidy it up, put them along the fence. Still can see my house, just my wife's car in my truck, so you can still see the driveway, you can still see the garage. I just think, I mean, I know that that trailer is going to move over to the other side. That boat's going to stay there and my truck is going to be parked right in front of that driveway every day. I don't have any other choice. I can't park my truck in my garage. I just can't do it. So now, I mean, it just seems like one way or another. And I understand you're looking down the road too, but I think the same thing. That neighbor has a trailer, the neighbor next to him has a trailer and the guy across the street has a mo- all of our houses are blocked by our stuff that, I know that's not the intention, but my house is going to be blocked like this. It's either going to look good like that, or I'm just going to have DG and I park my truck there. Not on the DG, but right there in front of it, you know, I'll have no other choice.
I know nobody's going to like this answer, but, you know, we have rules in a private community for a reason. And otherwise, just throw them out, you know, and then we got everybody just doing whatever they want. And you want it, we allow you to have it, then he's going to want it, and then she's going to want it, and then he's going to want it. It's a very hard decision for us to make, and it's very difficult when we face these things. I don't, this is the worst part about the job. And, you know, it's very hard, but we have rules in our community for a reason, because we don't want the place to go to, you know what. I mean, we want it to be kept up. We want things to look presentable. And I get it, and I get your intention of trying to make it look as presentable as possible. It's just hard.
Yeah, this one's hard for me. For me, the only thing that that helps me understand where you guys are coming from is one, it's not listed. And then, in the beginning, all the way up until where it shows 12 feet, that line, showing the distance between the two, it doesn't say the word cement. I only see cement behind where your boat's actually parked now, and I just see the DG. So I can understand why there would be a misunderstanding of what that would possibly be. This one's just a struggle. But it doesn't say cement on these lines. Any other comments, questions from the board? This one's a thinker. All right, I'm going to ask for a motion. I would like to ask for a motion from somebody.
I'm going to comment before we motion. I looked up where your house is and you're in a cul-de-sac, and I've lived in cul-de-sacs in this community. You have no street parking.
Unfortunately, one of our neighbors also owns a used car lot and parks a lot of cars on our street, so it's even-
So I feel for you, big time, because you have no, there is no street parking in front of your house, zero. There's, it looks in the picture, you might have four feet. And so I'm kind of thinking like, you know, even if you parked an RV or you had that closer to the street, I would have ACC and Patrol rewrite new tickets if it was blocking in front of your house. That's kind of my viewpoint. I mean, my feeling is that where it is in that picture, you're not blocking in front of the house. You're back far enough. And I see the point is the one-third landscaping, I mean, you would have to take pretty much the whole ribbons out. So I'm kind of on the fence. I'm just kind of thinking out loud as I'm looking at this. I do see on the plans, it says cement. I think that it's probably very hard to see, and I think as they were approving the plans, probably weren't able to see that, what that was. As you pointed out, it makes sense. And you look at it, it says 24 feet, it says DG in between. But when I looked at it the first time, I didn't see it that way. I saw just two red lines with DG. So I could see, I would, all of us missed it. I mean, there's no doubt about it. So I'm just thinking out loud. I don't know where I stand, but I'm thinking out loud.
I'm going to make a motion to not accept the ACC's recommendation.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to not accept the ACC recommendation. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm in favor. Motion carried.
May I ask if we can add something to it? We need to have a corrected plan so that moving forward, we have to be able to note for a second, third party to come in, because at this present time, it won't look like it's too planned.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to support that, to amend the plan, to more clearly delineate what is there.
I'll second that. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm in favor. Motion carried.
Sir, you understand what we're saying there on that second part? Okay. No, no, just, yeah, just sit down with Cheryl. She'll show you how to do it. Just make sure the plans, your plot plan, everything matches up. So the new owner or something coming down the road, it's all documented.
All right, next is Steve. Is it Val? Val?
My apologies. Okay, so for our final appeal, the ACC, Mr. Valley is here to appeal the overheight decorative fence located in the front setback. It was a denial for that. On July 19th of 2022, the inspectors noticed a non-permitted decorative fence screen in the front yard setback without approval. A letter was sent explaining that the fence screen required removal. Mr. Valley submitted an application and the plan was reviewed on August 25th and October 27th, and a final time on November 17th of 2022. The committee, due to a CCNR violation, denied the application and plan and the members' appeal. The committee recommended that the fence be relocated 32 feet back from the curb and submit for a variance due to the height restriction of six feet. Mr. Valley refused and decided to appeal to the board instead. So that really in itself is what it is. The staff recommended that the Board of Directors uphold the ACC Committee's decision to relocate the decorative fence screening to 32 feet back from the curb out of the front yard setback and submit for a variance for the six-foot overheight fence, which is a CCNR violation. Go ahead, Mr. Valley. It's your turn now.
Hi, I'm Steve Valley. I built, first off, I revitalized the whole house and put a roof on it, it's solar. And the bush that, there was a bush there, almost exact height, that died. And in the middle of it, I said, I got to get the bush out to make it look right. So I put that up versus a bush, and never do, I had to have a permit to do this. So in the midst of all this, here I am, it's 29 feet off the street and you want 32. You know, it beats up exactly with the concrete of where I'm at. It, I made it probably look better. It doesn't harm the neighborhood. I'm just looking for a variance to keep it and for you guys to help me out with it. That's what I'm looking for. No clue that I had to have a permit to replace it. Once I did the roof and I did the back of the yard too with the C-wall, but. So here we are. C-wall, but, so here we are.
Thank you. Board, yeah. Any questions or comments? I'll start with one. I've always considered these decorations. So I don't, it's, that's what's throwing me off versus like if it, if we're a statue, would it have to be approved if it was? Actually statues do have to be approved in our rules.
Good thing I haven't purchased a statue.
Okay, so there was a reference made regarding a bush, he said, that, um, died. Uh, bushes are not in the same rule factor as what these structures are. So they don't have a height limit because it's a live, you know, bush. Whereas any fence locations or any fences are considered structures, they have, then they have to conform to what the height is and the location and all of that. So in right now, he, yes, it is, uh, a good portion, I think it was a foot and a half that is in the CC, which in the, um, the setback and plus it's over height. So he's saying he would like to have a variance, but a variance has not been applied for. We do have an application and a cost for a variance to do the actual recording. And then, you know, the, for the actual height of it and for the location, it just needs to be pushed back. And I'm going to go ahead and let John explain what he means by how far back.
You, you know what? I'm here asking for a variance and help with it. That, that's why, because I didn't know I had to have all this because the bush died. I put it up and didn't even know I needed a permit. So that's what I got the permit. And now we're struggling over this. So I'm not here to fight or have anything about making the neighborhood look any worse than. Thank you.
So that.
So this thing is two panels, correct? There's a three?
Two.
Yeah, it's panels. Okay, so. So if you took out one, you would meet the requirement.
No, he needs, uh, two. Yeah, it, you need to be thirty-two feet back from the curb. And when we measured that, it was two panels. The posts hold the panels in place. He'd need to take out the first two posts, put them back on the backside because he actually could have them on, on the inside, on his courtyard side and have it there. Uh, the panels would be taking out the two posts and the wood panels in between and putting them on the backside of what the other two panels are. It would fit in there. And we measured it and showed them that, uh, they would fit there.
Well, even without adding them to the back, whatever, just to satisfy the community, the board, the rules, taking out fifty percent of that would solve everything.
But it wouldn't look right. I mean, honestly, I measured it today and it's twenty-nine feet from the backside of the curb. I think it's twenty-nine feet, four inches. So each panel is three feet. I could take one panel out and meet your thirty-two feet by a bit, by a couple inches. So if that's acceptable for a variance, I'm all good with that. But taking half of it away, it's, it's for me looking at the neighbor's front door. And I have no problem putting the panels on the other side of it. So it looks the same on both sides.
Could he go back and, and be with you guys about a variance?
Problem is that the variance does not include, you, you have to have a topography for the committee to approve it. And there's not a topography here. So if he says that it's twenty-nine feet and he only needs to move one panel to, uh, to meet that thirty-two foot setback, then I'm, the committee would be fine with that. Well, yeah, he still needs a variance for the overheight.
And I'm good with that.
Yeah.
As long as he's thirty-two feet-ish from the back of the curb. As long as he's thirty-two feet from the back of the curb, that's acceptable, but we can't allow that if it's twenty-nine feet. It's not up to us. But a variance can be applied for if it's over six feet. For the height, not the location. If he can move part of it, get really close to thirty-two feet.
Any more questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we uphold the ACC's recommendation and encourage the homeowner to go back and, uh, and file for a variance.
Is there a second?
Second then.
Any more discussion? Right, all in favor of upholding the ACC's decision, encouraging the homeowner to meet with ACC, which will include removing a portion of that. Uh, one of the panels probably or two, whatever it needs, and then also applying for a variance for a six-foot fence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm favor motion carried.
All right, I think that was, is that the last one? Thank you. All right, um, we're going to adjourn. Do you have a motion to adjourn this meeting, but board, we got to stay on because we got to finish our last executive meeting.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're going to adjourn. Ten minutes.